Adrienne Brightfeldler, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, December 19th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on the Central Avenue Corridor Streetscape Master Plan.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for December 19th, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Thank you. Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is the Central Avenue Corridor Streetscape Master Plan. I will turn it over to Economic Development Director Jill Connors.
Jill Connors, Economic Development Director here at the city. Thanks for your attention tonight. We're going to talk about the Central Avenue Streetscape Master Plan. For some of you, this will be new information. For others of you, this will be a repeat. You've listened along as we've gone through a process over a number of years here, gone through public engagement, done some planning. We've had some turnover of building and business owners in the corridor. So we thought we would go through some additional public engagement and get some new information to you. Our goal this evening, Ryan Peterson from RDG Planning and Design is going to present to you some information, as well as Dave Lyons from Greater Dubuque Development. And then our hope this evening is to help you understand what all is involved and get some feedback from you if you would like to see any changes and hopefully bring it to you in January for an approval. We'd like to get started in 2023 on spending some of the funds we currently have and putting together a budget moving forward for some projects we'd like to see happen there. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan Peterson. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jill, and good evening, members of council. And let's go ahead and get started here. So on the screen in front of you is the team that has helped guide this plan's effort. And as I'd like to remind you, we started this back in 2018. And it's been a multi-year process that's based on input that went well prior to that, I should say. And so it's been a big effort to get the neighborhood involved and to help us get to where we're at today. On the screen here are the partners that have contributed to this effort. Should probably add Greater Dubuque Development as well, as Dave Lyons has been a huge part of this effort. One of the things when we started this project, when we were retained, it was very clear to us that this needed to be a project that was developed with the input from the Washington Neighborhood, an extension of that community. And so we made that a clear focus as we went about receiving the input from the community. Our agenda this evening, share a little bit more about the background, talk a little bit about the public engagement, some of the themes, the analysis, the vision, and then what's next. And then after that, Dave Lyons will also share some of his work that he's been doing as well. So background, just a little bit of a refresh in terms of where we're at. On the bottom of the screen, you can see here about 22nd Street. So we've actually shifted the perspective of the aerial here. Most people experience it, Central Avenue from north to south, which, given the nature of the two-way or the one-way pairs, most people are driving southbound on Central Avenue. But this was the study area, and then the area in white was our focus. When City Council approved the RFP when we were retained, these were the objectives and the purpose that was provided to us. Number one, a lot of resources I mentioned earlier have been put into this project area. And so we wanted to make sure that we continue to invest in the north end. Two, this was a council priority, I believe it still is a council priority. And we wanted to have a vision for what the streetscape could look like through Central Avenue and within the Washington Neighborhood. And then three, we wanted to make sure that what we captured was highly illustrative, that included conceptual renderings. These are some of the key things that were within the RFP as well. Guidelines to help define what the fit and finish should be, talking about the various uses within the corridor, making sure that we preserve history, but then also improve walkability. Look at the different streetscape amenities, light, art, the pavement types, the character, how we create a sense of place, and then promote a creative, innovative, sustainable opportunities that can demonstrate the values of those individuals that live and work within the corridor. And then the last two, streetscape is not complete necessarily without street trees or landscaping, and then looking at making sure that we have cost-effective strategies that can be achieved in both the short and long term to help make sure that we continue the momentum. So this is the timeline. I think we started in 2018. You can see, though, that on the left-hand side of the screen here, in 2009, there was a community assessment done. There was a market analysis done for the Washington Neighborhood itself. There was some discussion with Iowa State University in terms of getting their perspective. And then we'll fast forward here all the way up to 2018. We kicked the event off with basically a full week workshop. And then after that, there was a Build a Better Block exercise that Dubuque Main Street hosted. So we were able to get input and then the next week, test how some of those strategies might look like. Over the course of the fall in 2018, we continued to receive feedback. And then ultimately, in the spring of 2019, we had what we would call a public input session to confirm that what we heard in the fall, that we were going down the right path. And you'll see here that generally speaking, we did receive that confirmation. I would say, fast forward to spring of 2020, the COVID-19 pandemic impacted what was happening within all of our communities. And from about 2020 to 2022, we did have a few work session almost about a year ago, but ultimately, we started to get some more feedback from some of the business owners along the 1700 to 1800 block at the curve that were concerned about some of the things in the plan. And so this past summer, in June, we reached back out to a number of those stakeholders to get their input, held a few more work sessions within the corridor itself, and ultimately did make some changes again based on that input that you'll see here tonight. So the public input, in 2019, we had a whole host of activities that helped make sure that people knew about what we were doing. The public engagement event was well-promoted throughout downtown. We had signs up for cars. We had what we call little drop boxes, so you could walk up to a kiosk and fill out a form. We also promoted it through the media and then did have about 3,500 people reached through social media. You can see a little bit about what was completed that night. We had tables. People were able to talk to the professionals. They were able to talk to city staff. We had some light beverages and food to assist in making it feel more of a kind of like a festival, someplace where you wanted to be. Then in the spring, I already mentioned this, we had another discussion. This was held at the Multicultural Family Center, and this is pre-the remodel, so it looks a lot different. But nonetheless, we did also have at that time a roundtable discussion that businesses brought up at that time, wanted to know more about, you know, potentially one-way to two-way parking, truck traffic, and costs. I will say that tonight, we don't have all of those elements solved. What we do have for you here is a vision that those things would need to be addressed through the next steps of the planning process. On the left and then on the right, so on the left, we have the Washington Neighborhood. We polled the citizens that came to that open house that evening. So those people that lived within the Washington Neighborhood, they ranked what amenities they appreciated most. We also asked the general public as well, so we could kind of compare and contrast what the people appreciated most. You can see here, generally speaking, there was fairly, everyone was fairly well-aligned. And I would say trees and landscaping, improving lighting and cameras, covered transit stops. And I would also say that integrated art and improving the site furnishings was something that most people welcomed as well. Decorative paving maybe scored a little bit lower, maybe not as much of a priority. And so just things that need to be considered as the project advances into that next phase of design. So fast forward to 2022, this past June, there was some concerns about what would happen when this plan went into effect. And so we had a number of conversations specifically with those around the 1800 block of Central Avenue, right there at the curve. We had small group meetings with each of the property owners. They were invited. We sat down, we listened to them, we asked them a series of questions. And generally speaking, you'll see that the feedback that they gave us was pretty much confirming what we had heard in 2019. I think there was just some concern that the work we were doing would potentially take away parking on street. And so we were reminded that we needed to make sure we keep that top of mind. Some of the themes that came out of that, these are the quotes from the individuals in our stakeholder interviews. We don't attribute them, but keeping it flexible, flowers, landscape benches, greenery, sidewalks and proper lighting, parking, 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 more green and trees, ADA accessible. And that's a big thing for us that continues to surface, might seem like maybe not the number one thing, but the corridor itself, there's a lot of thresholds. So when you go into a building, you might step up two inches into this building, or four inches into this building, or one into that one there. And those are challenges for people who may not be getting around as able as someone like myself that has no problem navigating that. And so we need to make sure that we are inclusive in our design and that we create an environment, a physical environment that's accessible for all as best as we possibly can. Some folks are concerned about what happens during construction. They've invested a lot already. We also have folks that are waiting to invest because they want to see construction. You can see new lights, sidewalks, cleaning it up, keeping it flexible. I think that was one of the key things early on. Great places for art could be a destination. And then I would outline here, as it relates to parking, parking needs to be in the neighborhood. And what we mean by that is you need to have parking in an area that feels like it's part of the district, it's part of the corridor that you've arrived. And then folks were generally comfortable walking a block or two, perhaps even three, to get to their destination. So ultimately, this was kind of a summary, what's in the master plan, of the themes that we put together based on the citizen engagement, embracing the Washington Neighborhood, complete streets, designing it for two-way traffic, but also being mindful that it may remain one-way. Integrating arts and culture, creating a sense of place, embracing the architecture, greening up the street, making sure that what we do, you can maintain, and that ultimately keeping, improving safety and keeping it economically, preserving and enhancing the economic conditions within the corridor itself. The analysis, just a few things here to point out, that when we're looking at a corridor and we're looking at a district, we're not doing it in a vacuum. We want to make sure that what we are planning will connect to the adjacent land uses, to some of those big destinations that attract people. So how do we connect to the parks? How do we connect to areas that provide services for individuals living here? How do we make the street be conducive to a safe pedestrian environment? We also looked at some of the demographics within the corridor. Some of the key things here to note is that this is where the largest percentage of car-free households within Dubuque are. This is also the highest concentration of youth, disabled, and maybe not the highest, but a fair number of senior individuals as well. And so walkability, safe sidewalks, lighting was top of mind for many. In 2018, we also looked at public transit, the transit system you have here. We received a lot of thumbs up for your transit system. People were very pleased with how it was helping them. However, there were some that would have liked a greater integration with technology and then also having covered transit to kind of keep things real time. So though, but generally speaking, positive remarks there. So a lot of background information, analysis, kind of the engagement here, a little bit about the vision now. So when we started the project, we, one of the public artists on our team, they were in awe of the buildings, of the character of what you have along the corridor. It was very inspiring to them, it was inspiring to us. And so we wanted to create a vision that felt like it was meant to be an extension of that tremendous architecture. And so you can see, we're looking at the arches and how we can use arches within the design, masonry, stone, the leaded glass, the ornamentation, bracketing. Those are all details that can be used to make the street feel like it's an extension of what you already have. We also looked at creating a more pedestrian-friendly streetscape. And so one of the things you're looking at here is there needs to be a balance between parking and walkways. I don't want to tell you that it's solved. We're in the conceptual phase. There needs to be an analysis done from a traffic engineering standpoint to really evaluate the geometrics. But I think the key point is maybe providing a bit more space for people versus those that are on the street. And there's a tight rope to walk there in terms of how far you go. When we started to lay out the corridor, we started to look, I guess, you can see on the screen, these are some of the hand sketches that we did during the work session that were inspired by what you have within the streetscape, thinking about how we can integrate the corridor's path. Central Avenue has had many names, Cooler Clay, I think, and this way the Cs come together, you can start to see some of the creativity there. And then looking at, you know, how we could use bollards that are reminiscent of the leaded glass. So here's an example of what the streetscape could look like at 12th and Central. We'll show you some more examples here at the curve. And as we walk through the plan, just a couple of things to note. I think trees are pretty straightforward, but one of the things I would highlight is the blue lines represent on-street parking. And again, this is subject to the next phases of design. The urban edge, one of the things we noticed in the corridors, in some cases, the private property and the pedestrian right-of-way, or the public right-of-way, kind of bleed together. There wasn't clear definition. Outside of City Hall, you have, there's a good example where you have beautiful railings and landscaping to kind of define that edge. And what that does is it creates this urban corridor that makes it feel as though it's complete. And it also makes it a little bit more difficult for people to park into the, you know, into the public right-of-way. You have bumpers and so forth, which if you only have eight feet and a car parks, you know, two to three feet over that private property line, all of a sudden, now you only have three feet. And if there's snow there, you don't really have a whole lot of room. And that's just one example of why this might be important. And there's many ways to carry that out. So starting on 22nd Street, you can see that when we designed this back in 2019, which is when these plans were generated, we were looking at how can we potentially accommodate two-way traffic and also looking at one-way. So the illustrations show two-way, but please don't, I guess, take that with a grain of salt as we're trying to make sure it works both ways, so that you can start to do improvements and potentially make that change later. So you can start to see here, adding trees, this is where some of those areas where there tends to be not clear definition in the right-of-way between the public way. As we move further south, in this particular scheme, you can see the addition of left-turn lanes potentially on 20th Street. As we move down here to 19th Street, looking at how we can integrate transit stops within to the streetscape network. And then ultimately, this is where in 2000, or this past June, we had another engagement session, and you saw probably the prior design and then the new design kind of flash over the top of that. After listening to the individuals that own property, that lease property, that do business here, they made it clear to us that parking was something that we needed to have essentially a no-net loss. And so we went through another round of discussions with those individuals. Ultimately, came up with a number, two different schemes. We'll show you those tonight. For the purposes of this plan, what we're showing here is that 18th Street would no longer connect to Central Avenue, but there would be parking, angled parking on the south side, and then parallel parking on the north side, extending the parking all the way up into the curve as far as we can while keeping it safe. So we'll come back to that here in a moment. This is the view of that space. I would point that, you know, you've spent a lot of time, and I think that this building here is one of the gems of this corridor, and the community itself really appreciates the work you've done. But not a lot of people get to see it because they're always driving away from it. So you got to look in your rearview mirror. I would say, though, that between the Raphith and Firehouse, number one, those are two iconic buildings that kind of frame the curve that we were trying to make sure we had clear sightlines to. So this is an illustration of the revised, proposed plaza or courtyard that you might find at the curve. One of the things you'll notice here is that we have removed the trees that were initially proposed to go right here. We are still proposing to have some greenery right here, but right now, there's a parking lot back here. And after speaking with the owner of that parking lot, they welcomed the addition of greening it up, providing kind of this flexible, open space. You also notice, in the prior scheme, we had a large stage and arches here that were elevated. We have now, we are now proposing to remove those. If you wanted to set up a stage, there'd be the infrastructure to do so, but it would not be raised. You could bring in a raised platform if that was desired. But really, this is meant to be an urban gathering space for the individuals and people that will be coming to this area. You can see another illustration here that shows a perspective view of the plaza itself, potentially the flexible stage that comes in here, bicycle parking, bollards. And then another view looking southbound, we've tried to keep some of the layers transparent, so you can kind of see past that, but, excuse me, not southbound, east, towards White Street, and keeping that flexible as much as we possibly can. So coming back to the master plan itself, you can see that we continue to promote a series of transit stops, bumpouts that could be, reduce the distance in which you cross the street, defining that urban edge, and really carrying out the slate of improvements that had been identified. Going rather fast because I wanted to get to the study that we did earlier this year. So during the workshop, we identified two different options, actually, three different options. We removed an option based on the feedback that day and felt that there was really an option A and an option B. We sat down with the stakeholders on the block, on the 1700 block, in a conference space from one of the landowners that has space there, got their input. And then on the next day, we had a larger engagement meeting where we actually gave people the opportunity to experience what this might look like in virtual reality, so that they could get an understanding for the sense of scale, what it might sound like, what it would look like. So on the screen is option A, and you can see that option A does not include direct access to Central Avenue. I mentioned the angled parking right here and then the parallel parking over here. And again, these are working drawings and sketches that we presented during that time. And then option B, which shows effectively, if you're driving southbound, you'd be able to exit Central Avenue and enter 18th Street, or potentially keep going south through the alleyway. Look at the parking analysis that we did based on our walking tour and inventory of what was out there, where it says, well, green is on-street, the yellow would be off-street. All the off-street in this particular snapshot is privately owned. But through discussions with those landlords, I would say that they are welcome a conversation about maybe shared parking. And then we also looked at, you know, if you were to relay out their parking lots, could you actually add spaces? And so that's why it says nine existing, 11 proposed, is essentially when you relay it out and you look at a more efficient way of placing parking in there, you could potentially increase it. So the two options, side by side. Option A, some of the pros. You have a large, continuous plaza that connects all of the sidewalks from south to north. You can maximize the outdoor seating, the outdoor gathering space. You will have less alley traffic coming from Central Avenue. Some of the cons, you will have a dead-end feel on 18th Street, and you will lose that connection to Central Avenue. Option B, this continues to provide a one-way in, allowing drivers to exit Central Avenue. There is still a vehicular connection to Central and some outdoor seating. You will have the need here to create a crosswalk that folks will have to make sure that, you know, we navigate, they can navigate those cars that may be coming into here. Some of the cons, I would say, is there's an increase, potential increase in pedestrian and vehicular conflicts, smaller plaza, potential concern about traffic being funneled into the alley. All things, I think, in both options would be an improvement. In both options, the groups that were both met on Central Avenue and then those down at the Multicultural Family Center that came to our kind of report out, generally speaking, were supportive of both. So we furthered that conversation in talking with the engineering department here within the city of Dubuque. And they weighed in and ultimately, between their preference towards option A and our preference towards option A, that is what we've authored within the master plan, report document that was in your council packet. But obviously, your input on that matter is welcome and will be considered and we'll go from there. So next steps, before I turn it over to Dave, we have, number one, the landowners that are investing in this corridor would like to see continue, or would like to see more investment. We'd like to, at a later point in time, receive your thumbs up on this and the adoption, so that we can allow the city's capital improvements plan to be used to invest within this corridor. Secondly, a preliminary design analysis of the corridor itself needs to be completed that will ultimately help define, you know, the magnitude of construction costs. And then three, you do final design, bidding and construction. That timeline I outlined there, there hasn't been one put in place yet. Those are just the steps that need to take place. But ultimately, it starts with adoption, so that we can start to work through those next items. So with that, I will call Dave up here. And? Go from there, so just hit the down arrow. So thank you all.
We'll be back for questions.
We'll be back for questions.
Dave Lyons with Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, 900 Jackson Street. Jill and Ryan did a great job outlining many years of work by hundreds, if not thousands, of people. But a year ago, Greater Dubuque Development got a request, and that was, how do we reinvigorate this process, which has kind of gone dormant for a couple of years, all for good reason, COVID, financial issues, et cetera, but to accomplish three things as quickly as we could? The first one is, is to rejuvenate investment, so those who were investing, but more importantly, those who were considering investing, did not walk away. We talked to many people over the last year who are really sitting on the fence. Do I buy the property, or do I continue? Do I buy the property or do I continue to lease? Do I make this investment or do I pass? What is the city going to do with this vision? So I think that was critical, to generate the momentum necessary to bring these private dollars off the bench and into the game. The second thing we were asked to do is not predispose decisions that have not been made yet. So nothing that we're talking about in this momentum-driving effort predisposes the issue of one-way or two-way, or predisposes the issues of trucks. We know those are items that still face you and that you're waiting for additional data on. Nothing that we're talking about tonight or in 2023 predisposes those issues. And the third issue was, is to bring partners in. This can't just be something which is a city council activity. We need to have local partners we're talking to, and we need to have investment coming in to leverage the infrastructure you're talking about. So I wanted to stress three things tonight. First of all, the efforts that have been undertaken to focus on this area, the 17, 1800 block, to get started is good. It's excellent view for the community about investment, and it's some of the most integral engineering you're going to be doing. So this is a great place to start. The second issue is, is that we are, in fact, bringing some partners to this. I'm going to talk about one of them tonight that's probably one that you're fairly familiar with, so you'd understand why they're here. Dubuque Initiatives is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that you have partnered with in the past, and everything from industrial parks to lower main redevelopment. You'll see here a series of buildings that they are working on in this portion of the corridor, in anticipation that the city is going to follow through with the Central Avenue corridor, corridor vision. On the lower right-hand corner is the first one, nearly finished, 1736, great apartments, great redevelopment, both front and back. Upper left-hand corner is 1700 to 1722, three buildings, and it's almost completed its second phase for historic tax credit analysis. So it's getting ready for redevelopment. Upper right-hand corner is 1701, a building with 300, I think, outstanding violations in front of the city, now owned by Dubuque Initiatives, and in finishing its first phase of historic tax credit review. Around the corner, a pair of buildings, 1824 and 1828, again, problem properties, recently purchased by Dubuque Initiatives, one side on a contract sale, the other directly owned by Dubuque Initiatives. And we're looking at, we have confirmed that even those buildings do have the opportunity for historic tax credits, so they may be an opportunity for a strong redevelopment. We're hoping. This is the example of the private sector, both profit and non-profit dollars that are coming into this corridor in hopes that the city moves forward. But we do need the city to move forward. You've got others, the Muzina, the, the Voices Building. It's ready to go, but we can't do things like the landscape, and we can't do things like the look and the feel. Because if we did, it wouldn't be a holistic vision that you've already built. So that's another reason why this is important for you to act on. Things will happen, but they won't be that vision you have unless the city comes in and begins to lead again in this area. The third issue is, is that it's important not just to send a positive message to the local businesses, you can unleash existing dollars in your budget. You've got money for engineering, you have a green alley, which with us would be a perfect process, a place to put a green alley. You have $150,000 in beautification funds. Those are dollars which, even though they're not big in the big scheme of things, will make a big difference to the folks who are investing down there or driving through and thinking about it going, hey, this is really happening. So those dollars already exist, and just as important, they'll help you plan for '23, '24, '25, '26 CIPs, because a little engineering goes a long way. It protects against some investments coming in and actually being off-kilter with the vision you have. The more you set the leadership, the more the investment is going to fall in line with your overall vision and accomplish your objectives. And the last issue is very self-serving for anybody who has properties down on Central Avenue. If you come in now with this plan approved, we create shovel-ready projects that we can go after federal funds with. And as you know, there are new federal dollars that are available, and they are looking for places in disadvantaged portions of communities. But you've got to be shovel-ready. You got to say, here's the plan, here's the partners, here's the private and public leverage you can count on federal government now. Help us with the lead pipes. Help us with the streetscaping. Help us with the digital equity that needs to come with this. So I wanted to come in and just note that there is private investment coming in, but it can't make this happen until the city adopts this plan and begins to move forward. Thank you.
All right.
And we'll take any questions.
All right, well, thank you all. Really appreciate that. Okay, so we got plenty of time here. Let's, just, just a quick note, we've got a long meeting after this, so let's, let's shoot for getting it done just a little before 6:30 if we can. So as we think of questions and discussion here, we can do that, we'll do our best. All right, open it up. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I am very anxious and wanting to move, definitely want to move forward on this. If this is the goal that we want, I understand that we need a traffic study, but what will the traffic study actually show us? What will it tell us? What, what would it actually tell us? That's my question, so what would a traffic study actually tell us? If, if this is the direction that we truly want to go forward on, do we really need a traffic study?
I think the, the simple answer is yes. Again, Jill Connors, Economic Development Director. We've spoken with the engineering department, and they, they've got some funding set aside in the current CIP to be able to pull the trigger on, on funding such a study. But that's going to tell us what the traffic volumes are and begin to help us understand what, what do we need to think of as far as one-way and two-way traffic? What do we need to think of as far as truck traffic? We can't make those decisions based on personal preferences and, you know, anecdotal information, so it'll give us some of the data that we need to make, make good decisions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Thank you. So it could be you or others, depending on the question. I know we're not supposed to talk about two-way streets, or it's not a big deal right now, we'll talk about it more in depth later. But I, I did read that, that one-ways are just as efficient as, pardon me, the two-way streets are just as efficient as one-ways as long as there are no left turns allowed. And I do mention, I do notice that there were some left-turn lanes mentioned in, in some of the shown earlier. So I'm not afraid of one-ways right now, because if we can put in some left-turn lanes, otherwise, if they're prohibited, they're just as efficient. My main question is about, there are no bike lanes shown. And I've seen, I've seen cross views of, of other cities, and they have a four-foot bike lane. And so possibility is, instead of 13-foot sidewalks, maybe 11-foot sidewalks and say two feet for a dedicated bike lane. That's what I would like. A lot of, when I hear from citizens, they notice that a lot of people are biking downtown, and they're kind of in the way, is what, you know, the car people kind of think sometimes. What are these bike people doing here? Well, if there was a dedicated lane, that might help. So, and if anybody's counting, I prefer, I would like to seriously think about option B. I know option one or option A is recommended. I've just been in some very crowded places in England and Ireland, and what they have is they have a, a very traffic-calming construction, and it is, the, the default is red, so that you'd have to have a car stop and it would, and it would turn green for them, rather than just keep going. And then that would be a possibility that it's, it's usually open for people to walk through. But I just, again, with traffic study is great, but my impression is that not a lot of people are going to go that way, if they have to stop there initially. Okay, that's my engineering hat on for tonight. And I, I agree that we do need to move forward with this. I think we're able to do it. There's some great ideas here, and we should move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Russell.
Thank you. I have a little bit of trouble reconciling the two presentations. Ryan mentioned that some of the items, some of those important items need to still be decided, and Dave tells us that action is needed now. So which of those, what of those things can we, can we finalize so that we can get to the action step? What's, what's, what's in our way to, to saying, yes, let's go?
Well, what's in our way is we don't have an adopted plan. So when we look at the Millwork District back in 2008, 2009, there was a lot of study that happened, but then there was a plan that was adopted as the overall vision, and then you could start to put together the discrete pieces to, to implement that vision. And that's, that's what we'll do here, is once we have the vision adopted, then we can look at the very specific pieces such as, you know, the size and design of the plaza or, or the street corridor, that sort of a thing. So there is some funding that had already been appropriated, ready to pull the trigger on some of this design, for instance, but we don't want to do it piecemeal. We want to make sure that everybody agrees on the vision.
Okay.
And then, and then we go into the different puzzle pieces.
I can just a little bit broader. When I say we got to go and get started, that means get started. There are certain investments that you can make that don't predispose the other activities. You know, for example, the green alley, they're great environmental things, but they're also great public space issues. And so the idea of you adopting the plan now has us knowing generally where we're going to want to focus our dollars, limited dollars on green alley. A second issue, you have $150,000 for beautification. How do we spend that in a way that we know is safe to presume council approval? Your approval of the plan would allow us to do it. Now, we know that there will be certain ones of these improvements that really aren't on the 2023 agenda, because they have to wait for bigger decisions to be made. We don't want to put something, we're not going to plant a tree on a corner where the tree might have to be torn back out. So it's going to limit what we can do, but it's going to give us some options. So none of these issues really, again, predispose that you haven't made certain decisions, but you've made one decision, and that is this general vision is in line with what, what you want it to look like, what you want it to feel like, what you want it to operate for, for the people in these neighborhoods. We'll have to be careful that any small investments we can make ahead of time don't predispose those other issues, because the last thing people want to see is us put something in and then have it torn out by us or the DOT. But approval of the plan sends a message to folks like Marie Ware at, at, to say, okay, so what should the benches look like, and where should they start to go?
Thank you very much.
Ms. Wethel?
So I just want to clarify and follow up a little bit on Ms. Russell's comment. The vision needs to be adopted, but do we need a traffic study to adopt a vision?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones? I agree with Mr. Resnick. We've got 26 feet of pedestrian space, we, we need to find some bicycle space. That's.
Can you say that again? Sorry.
We've got 26 feet of pedestrian space in the west of the streetscape. We need to, we need to convert some of that to dedicated bicycle space. That's, that's pretty obvious, and what I'm hearing from citizens all over the city, don't count on me to be riding a bicycle down there, but I count on David to want to do it, and I want him to be safe doing so, and everybody else. That, that, I do see that as a missing piece. I'm, I'm ready with this. I think you've, you've hit all the touchpoints that need hitting. I think we've addressed the concerns that, that we heard anyway last, last spring and early summer. And it is a, it is a project that people are ready to see some movement on, so I, I want to get it moving. I did like, I did agree with the engineers that A looks better and safer to me than B. And I don't know what you're looking for from us tonight, if you want a consensus in A versus B, or if you just want a consensus, let's get this on a formal agenda as an action item and adopt it, or what you're, what the actual ask is of the council.
On that one in particularly, we've, we had a lot of input. The key is, is that A and B are better than the existing situation where people about get run down every day, right? And it, A and B both preserve, if not enhance, the parking opportunities, et cetera. There are slight variations from some of the folks who like A better than B, but you've already started doing what we asked you to do. You just basically said, you know what, in Europe, there is an opportunity to have through traffic areas, but they're used in a traffic-calming way. Is that information we can take back to engineering to say, if you were to have this technology, what would it cost? How would we put it in? And if we did that, would that create the level of safety necessary for you to reconsider B? So I, I think you're, I'm already writing notes that, guess what, there might be ways to reconsider it if we want to reconsider it. But you can move forward tonight and basically say, this is what we're looking for, this is the default, and we'll continue to work on that, particularly because the folks who own these buildings, live in these buildings, have their businesses in these buildings, are going to continue to be engaged in this process.
Again, if I may, I, I don't feel like we need you to decide tonight whether it's a option A or a option B, because unless I'm incorrect, none of you are traffic engineers, nor am I. And anyway, it's, it serves our purpose to have the vision, the overall vision adopted at a future meeting in order for us, again, to get into those details and figure out what's the safest.
Ms. Farber, you're, you're joining us remotely. Do you have any input on this?
Yes, I do. I just have one quick question, and it's regarding the truck traffic and what kind of conversations you've had with the businesses down there that would be generating the trucks to come through the Central Avenue corridor, or will they be diverted? Do you know, or have you done any study to kind of give a projection on that? Thank you.
Thank you. There were conversations, several conversations that happened along with Greater Dubuque Development. We spoke with several businesses, but this was back in 2019 when this whole process started. Those conversations will need to happen again. Again, this vision does not preclude us from taking other option of removing the trucks, letting them there, having some sort of a hybrid option as far as when they could. I'm, I'm not the engineer, and I'm not the, the, the person who understands how, how to best convey our, our traffic around the community, but that can be decided once, again, once we have a, a plan in place. Please.
Thank you very much.
One additional item, in 2019, we did work with WHKS, who simulated the movement of a semi-truck through the corridor that helped inform the geometries that you see within the plan. It's not just, you know, thinking it'll work, we did test it. That is not a substitute for doing the traffic study that has been brought up multiple times that would look at traffic, parking, one-way, two-way, all of those items. But I do want to point out that we did make sure to, you'll see areas where there's pavement that's striped off that would accommodate the rear wheels, the turning movements, those types of things as you move through the corridor. Ms. Wethel?
So I just have a couple of concerns about time and two experiences. One is that I was at a business on Central, and they talked about, I mean, we discussed that it's one of our largest car-free neighborhoods, and they discussed how they needed a bus stop for their employees. stop for their employees that was covered. And I had to say, I'm sorry, but I think we have to wait, but I'm not sure how long that is. And so it's really hard for me to have to tell people, yes, I want that for you too, but we don't want to do that because we don't want to have to rip it down and redo it. And so I think the urgency and my concern for constituents is that we need to move for the basics, for bus stops. The other is for lighting. So I went on a tour of lighting at night with some owners from Central Avenue businesses and properties, and without question, we need to improve lighting in that area, not just in alleyways, but on Main Central. The quality of the lighting, the height of the lighting, how it sends light directly into apartment buildings because it's in an inappropriate space. And again, when can we fix it? I'm so sorry, but I have no way to tell you that. And so I think my biggest concern is frustration with time and needing to tell my constituents, I'm sorry, I'm not sure when. And so the urgency is there for me personally in trying to represent them well, and I hope that we don't hold this up for traffic studies. That's it.
Okay, so we are down to our last couple of minutes here. Thank you very much for the presentation. This was, this was very, very helpful. You know, we have heard this several times, those of us that have been sitting here for a little bit at least have heard it several times. What I hear is general consensus from my council colleagues here that we're ready to go. So, you know, I think in general, you said January, Jill, to bring this back. I know we have two meetings in January.
Right.
Either one, sounds appropriate to me, based on what we're looking at here. And just to be really clear for anybody who's paying attention to this, by saying that we want to bring this back and adopt this master plan, what I'm hearing you say is that we are adopting the vision to move it forward. Details and specific plans are being discussed once we adopt this vision, and we're going to continue to have this discussion. So for any neighbors who are in the Central Avenue neighborhood, businesses that are thinking of going down there, this discussion will continue.
Right.
But we need to say go with the master plan to be able to move some of the basics forward, as Ms. Wethel pointed out, talking about things like lighting. And I heard, you know, we've got money that we've already allotted to some of these things that are going to be basic improvements that we'll be able to make. So all those details will continue to be ironed out, but we need to, it's time to say go, essentially.
If you're ready.
All right. Well, wonderful. Is that everything you need from us this evening, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thanks again, appreciate it. We will adjourn this work session with no further business and start up again at 6:30.